Okay, it looks like we're live on all our channels.
Thank you.
And Lori, would you pass the hosting back to me? Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It is March 2nd, 2021. Tonight is the Gallatin City Council meeting. Before we officially officially call ourselves to order, we do have to vote to hold this meeting electronically. So I'm going to read this and then we'll entertain a motion. And it gives those interested in participating in the meeting, information about the meeting and also about viewing the meeting. So this says pursuant to Governor Lee's executive orders number 16 and subsequent orders, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. The March 2nd, 2021 Gallatin City Council meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be livestreamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council and the citizens of Gallatin. You can join the Zoom meeting at the link shown there on the screen. You can also find that link on the City of Gallatin Facebook page and on gallatinTN.gov, which is our city website. Or you may dial in at 470-381-2552 or 470-250-9358 and enter the webinar ID 83436277104. Now, to participate in the meeting, you have to participate through the Zoom platform. You can certainly watch through our other channels, but you won't be participating in the meeting unless you share your comments with us through the Zoom platform. So with that, entertain a motion to hold this meeting electronically.
Motion approved.
I have a motion by Councilman Overton. I think that second was by Councilman Alexander. Okay, second by Councilman Alexander. With that, I'm going to ask Ms. Kettrell to call the roll for the vote, and I'm going to ask that you affirm your presence when she does that, and that will skip a step here in a few minutes.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes, present.
Councilman Fann.
Yes, and here.
Councilwoman George.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes, and present.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes, and here.
Councilman Overton.
Yes, and present.
Mayor, seven I zero nays, and we have a quorum.
Wonderful. So we are officially now called to order, and we're going to begin this meeting like we do each meeting with our invocation. And for that, I'm going to ask Councilman Alexander to pray for us, please.
Let us all pray. The Congress of God, once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you for allowing us to sit here at our respective places. One prayer of God, that everything we say tonight and do will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name, I do pray in every heart's head. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Alexander. We do have no minutes this evening, so we have none to approve. And so we're going to move now to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where anyone who's in the public can speak to any item that's on the agenda. There's also a time at the end of the meeting where you can speak to an item that's not on the agenda. But I also want to let you know that there are several public hearings tonight. So if you have a comment related to one of the items that are on public hearing, you may wish to wait and speak under one of the public hearings. For your information, the public hearings are this. The first one is for the Goat Farm, which is the development out at Shoot Lane between Gallatin and Hendersonville. The second, third, and fourth all pertain to the 655 acres at Red River Road and east of Highway 109, commonly referred to in past meetings as the Bowles Property. The first is for the adopting the plan of service. The second is for the annexation. The third is for the rezoning of those parcels in the preliminary master development plan. The sixth and seventh public hearings are related to Woods Crossing. Again, this is for adopting a plan of service. Is the first one. The annexation is the second one, and the final one is the rezoning of the two parcels and the preliminary master development plan for that medium-density residential development. So those all things, those things all happen on public hearing. If you'd like to speak under that, you may. But if you'd like to speak on anything that's on the agenda, you may do so at this time. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to Mr. Jeff Henshaw. He will call on you to speak. If you're on the telephone and you wish to speak, you're going to hit star nine. If you are online, you can reuse the raise your hand function actually on the computer, and we will recognize you, and you may speak, and you will have five minutes to do so. We ask that you introduce yourself and give us your address. With that, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, it is public recognition on agenda-related items. We do have Victoria, who's raised her hand. Go ahead. You'll have to unmute yourself.
Are you there?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay. I was, the paperwork that I received says that it was a public hearing tonight for the Twin Eagles expansion. Is that on there? I didn't hear Mayor Brown say anything. The annexation.
It's partially written tonight.
It's not a public hearing, but you can speak on it now. Yes.
It's not a public hearing.
Right.
But you can speak to it because this is public recognition on agenda-related items. The first reading happens tonight, so it's on the agenda, and certainly fair game to speak to.
Okay, I have a few concerns about it, as you were just saying that.
Ma'am, for the record, we need your name and your address, please.
I'm sorry. It's Victoria Hagan, 599 Douglas Lane, Gallatin, Tennessee. And I guess my concern is, as you just said, Mayor Brown, that you're discussing the Bowles Farm, which apparently they're wanting to put 2,250 residential units there. And that's right here by the Twin Eagles as well. There's Fairway Farms going in, and there's also Cumberland Point, which is 100-town homes. That's an awful lot of homes wanting to be put in, not including the Twin Eagles, where he wants to add 171 homes. The fire captain, Victor Williams, I believe his name is, has said that he doesn't feel that the road is adequate for fire department. I believe Mayor Brown had said that there is no funding for a new fire department, and he suggested that there would need to be a new fire department. I also had read where they said we would need additional police and police and units to cover that area. I'm trying to see what I had here. The Public Works Department indicated that there's inadequacy of the county road, which is Douglas Lane, and it should be evaluated. Judy Harden stated that Douglas Lane is an 18-foot roadbed, and her words were, she thinks it's sufficient based on the traffic study that was done in the middle of last year's pandemic. I understand the last meeting y'all said that the traffic study incorporated the amount of people that would have been on the road, and I don't know how they could have done that, not having been out here before. So that's a concern, the traffic there, that's going to all dump onto 25 there, and then 25 to the 109 where, you know, you're looking at adding all these other these other homes. I also feel like it should just stay in the county and let Mr. Jones deal with the county as opposed to the city. I feel like he's being wanting to build as much as he can, 171 homes. His person that spoke last week also stated that if he is not annexed into the city, that yes, he will be able to build there. It will be connected to the city sewage. The people will still have sewage, and he'll still be able to build plenty of homes. He just won't get the 171 homes. And I sure would hope that if you do annex it, which I'm kind of praying you don't, if you do annex it, please don't allow him to at least do a five-foot setback instead of that 10-foot setback. That just allows him to add that many more homes, and that just seems like greed to me, in my opinion. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hagan.
All right, Pascal Givans, go ahead.
Good evening, all Pascal Givans, 1335 Long Hall of Fight. A couple of items tonight on there. I was reading, I think, 14 about the changes on the planning commission. And I was surprised to see on there that the mayor supposed, if I read right, supposed to be on a planning commission. So I was wondering why I never seen the mayor in the planning commission, or I'm missing something. On the Twin Eagles, again, I want to thank you all because I'm going to have a nice steak dinner because before the election, I made the bet that as soon as the election were passed, we need goals, we'd be back and we'd be voted in. So I want to thank you because I'm going to have a nice steak dinner. That's going to be voted in because we get from the same, of what we hear, we hear exactly the same thing that happened with the Meadows. The county threat is back on the same way, same tactics with the Meadows. That's going to go in the county, so we need to comfort everything. I think, Mayor, you did it. You said it right. The city cannot afford more annexation right now. We need to take care of what we have and stop growing because, again, if we come back to the fire and the police, with everything was going on, we're going to have to add more firemen. Not even talking about the fire station, just the number of people we're going to have on the safety, fire and police, just to support that growth, and that's a lot of money. And the mayor, you said it right, we cannot afford it. That means if we do that, we're going to have to pay for it, and we're going to have to pay for it. We know that good. That means we're going to get a tax increase. Even if you guys said, you know, our taxes, the city doesn't push the tax, but indirectly you still do it because the county pushed the values up and like a lot of people this year, so I had to pay more tax to the city, even if you kept it neutral because the county pushed the value of my property up. So Mayor, we appreciate what you're doing. We appreciate what you're saying, and hopefully, the council will follow your advice and stop the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. June Hedge, go ahead. You'll have to unmute yourself in Zoom. Mouse over the bottom of the screen, you'll see a mute button to your left at the bottom there. There you go.
All right, sorry. Yeah, this is June Hedge, and I live at 604A Douglas Lane. And this is, this is, you have to understand, this is a very dangerous road out here. It's narrow with no shoulder on either side of the road. When a larger-than-a-passenger vehicle comes towards you, you, you have to slow way down because you never know when you're going to have enough room to pass. Just my mailbox has been hit a number of times by pickup trucks, and their, their mirrors, just, you know, just make it a huge dent in my mailbox. There's just not enough room on the road. The speed limit is 30, but most vehicles don't go. It's really, really unsafe to go that fast. I will say that the same thing as Ms. Hagan had said, that this is a tremendous number of houses that you're projecting here. I mean, has anybody there at the council, I mean, have you really added how many houses this is and what it's going to do to the city? I mean, insofar as the services that you have. I just do not see that if you're going to put, you know, all those in on the other side of 109, why? I mean, why, why do this over here increasing, increasing Eagle? It just, it really does not make sense. It sounds like that they've gone on way past the time that it should have. And the second, you know, the second entrance and egress, it should have been made long ago. But it, you know, somebody really needs to take stock and see how, how much total activity this is adding to this, this little corner of summer county. And that's, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. For those who are on your cell phone, if you wish to speak, a reminder that you hit star nine to raise your hand, and then we'll call out the last few digits of your phone number. Here's that's, that's all the people who want to speak.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Henshaw. And that concludes public recognition on agenda-related items. We'll move now to Mayor's comments. I really don't have much. Last week I did mention just a huge thank you to the city employees that worked following the snow and ice situation that we had the previous week. And I want to acknowledge them again. Certainly, our Public Works Department, they were working around the clock, trying to get the roads taken care of, but we also had a lot of support services happening. Our police and fire, of course, but internally, a lot of our departments were still working, planning still got their planning stuff out in time for their meeting on Monday. Our finance department was working to make sure everyone got paid. Our IT department was working to make sure that everything continued working for the city as it needed to. And of course, our utility folks were working with any issues there. Everybody was truly working, and it was a difficult time. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. Also do want to mention, and this is for the public's awareness and for this council's awareness as well, because you may not have heard yet, but there has been a mudslide on Old 109 at the bridge there near what we affectionately call the Catfish Pond. So that road is going to be down to one lane for at least two months. The people over there working are taking measures to make sure that that can stay open. Hopefully, we will be able to keep it open at one lane, but they need to make sure that it's safe and that it's, it's, it's supported so that we can continue to do that. But please be aware of that. Please try to avoid that area as much as you possibly can. It is going to be an inconvenience inconvenience and a hassle. So we apologize for that, but we can't can't really affect what happens with some of the natural activities that happens around here. So that concludes Mayor's comments. We're going to move now to the regular agenda. And the first item on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance 02102-5. And for that, I'm going to recognize Councilman Hayes.
Yes, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, rezoning a 16.78-acre portion of a parcel from the R-20 Low Density Residential District to the PGC Plan General Commercial District, rezoning a 2.5, 2.05-acre portion of a lot from the MU Mixed Use District to the PGC Plan General Commercial District, also rezoning a 3.8 acre portion of a parcel from the R-20 Low Density Residential District to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, and rezoning a 3.04-acre portion of a lot from the Mixed Use District to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District with a preliminary master development plan for the Goat Farm totaling 25.67 acres located south of Nashville Pike and east of Shoots Lane. This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak, they will do so just like we did under public recognition. You will use the computer to use the raise your hand function. If you're online, if you're on your cell phone, you can use star nine to indicate that you'd like to speak, and then Mr. Henshaw will call on you, and you may say what you'd like to say about this. The public hearing is now open. Mr. Henshaw?
Thank you, ma'am. Pascal Givans, go ahead.
Pascal Germans, 1335 Long Hall of Fight. Good evening again. The Goat Farm, I've been talking about that for a while. I was getting ring. That's a great idea, but there is still things we should be talk about. We heard about an interlocal agreement between the county Andersonville and Galatin regarding police and fire. I'm wondering where we are with that, and maybe that agreement should be in place before we talk to everything else, because if this agreement was not in place, who's going to take care of police and fire, and what's going to be the cost? Again, I'm talking about cost on that. I went to the meeting, meet, meet the people back there. It's a pretty book cover, of course. Again, these people are not developer. They are land broker. Like a lot of these guys, they arrive with a nice book cover, and the inside is blank, and they're going to get a rezoning. MRO, MU, who let them put apartments. Right now, they removed the apartment from the plan, but like a lot of things we have seen happening there in Galatin, these land brokers arrive, get the rezoning, and send the development to somebody else. And when the next developer, the real developer, who's going to buy into it, going to arrive in front of you and say, we're zoning MU and MRO, I want to put apartments. They're going to get apartments because like you say, a lot of time, it's on with apartments. There is nothing we can do about it. So that would be things we should, we should talk about the internal agreement and the zoning. The ice rink is great. It's a great idea. The Predators were supposed to be there. We still have no clue if they something done or not with the Predators. So that's another thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, cellphone caller ending in 085. Hit star six to unmute your cellphone.
Yes, I was calling in regards to the Twin Eagles project. And my name is Scott Goodwin, live on 592C Douglas Lane.
Mr. Goodwin, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We've already closed public recognition on agenda-related items. This is actually a public hearing for a development.
Okay, thank you.
I'm so sorry.
I tried to get on there earlier, and it didn't recognize me, but.
I'm sorry. You know, this is first reading this evening, so there will be other opportunities in the future where you can speak as well.
I don't see anyone else that's indicated they'd like to speak.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will declare public hearing on ordinance 02102-5 closed. Moving now to item two, which is public hearing on resolution R2102-13, and Councilman Alexander, you're recognized to introduce this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the resolution of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, adopting a plan of service for the annexation of three partial totaling 655.44-plus amount of acres. Tax map 113, partial 001.00 and also 002.00 and 0450, located north of Red River Road and east of Highway 109, and providing for an effective date. And this is a public hearing.
And this is the public hearing on resolution R2102-13. This is related to the adopting of the plan of service for this. There are two other public hearings related to this property. Just for your information, one is on the annexation, and one is on the rezoning and preliminary master development plan. So public hearing on this is now open. Anyone wishing to speak, if you're on your phone, hit star nine. If you're on the computer, use the raise your hand function. You will be acknowledged by Mr. Henshaw and given time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's see. Just give everybody a minute. They'd like to use the raise your hand function. Now's the time. I don't see anyone like to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Henshaw. I don't either. So we will declare a public hearing on resolution R2102-13 closed. Moving on to item three, which is public hearing on resolution R2102-14, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, annexing the three partial totaling 655.44-plus and minus acres. Tax map 113, partial 001.00 and also 002.00 and 045.00 located north of Red River Road and east of Highway 109 into the city of Gallatin. Authorizing the annexed property to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, assign the annex area to a council district, or repealing conflicting ordinance, conducting ordinance, providing for servability and providing for effective date public hearing.
Public hearing is now open. If you wish, just if you'd like to speak, you may raise your hand, either using the function on your computer or using star nine on your cellphone. Use the raise your hand function. You will be recognized to speak in this public hearing.
Hey, Pascal Givans, go ahead.
Pascal Germans, 1335 Long Hall of Fight. Thank you again for taking the time listening. The Bowles Property, I have to say that that looks like a really nice development on the paper, plenty of good things. Get it retirement community. I think we need that in Galatin. But again, it's 2,000-plus houses. How can we afford that? Traffic, people. The the recommendation on the police to add one, one officer, one car. And I'm kind of surprised it's only one because they 655 acres to cover with one more guy. That's going to be a lot of work. But I think what really really get me on that one is again, there is no feasibility study yet on that project, so I'm wondering how the planning commission can make any recommendation without any feasibility study. 655 acres annexation, that's a lot of acres. That's a lot of houses. That's a lot of money, and we don't have the study on what that's going to cost and the impact on the city. So I'm kind of surprised about that. That would be great that we get that, so we can really get an idea of what's going on there. Even if it's a nice project, we should have that. And again, come back to what the mayor said. I don't think we can afford that annexation. So hopefully, you take that account and appreciate your time.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak, please use the raise your hand function. And I think that's everyone.
Thank you. Moving on to item four, which is public hearing on ordinance 02102-6, and Councilman Alexander again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an order of the City of Gallatin, Southern County, Tennessee, rezoning three partial totaling 655.44-plus and minus acres from the RR Rule Residential County District to the R8 PRD Medium Density Residential, Plan Residential District Development District, 435.6-plus and minus acres from the Rural Residential County District to the MU Mixed Use District, 132.92-plus and minus acres from the RR Rule Residential County District to the PBP Plan Business Park District, 86.9, 86.92-plus and minus acres with a preliminary master development plan for the Bowles Property, located north of Red River Road and east of Highway 109, authorizing revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinance, providing for servability, and providing for an effective date public hearing rezoning.
Thank you. This is public hearing on ordinance 02102-6. And you can likely know the routine by now, but I'll repeat, if you're on your phone, use star nine to indicate that you'd like to speak and raise your hand. And if you're on the computer, use the raise your hand function. And if you don't know where that is, hover your cursor over the lower portion of the screen. You'll find it there.
Okay, just giving the attendees another few seconds to raise your hand. If you'd like to speak on this item.
Mayor, this is James Fenton. May I speak?
Um, you may.
I think we had gone back through and worked with developer, and that business park was supposed to be much larger. I think what Councilman Alexander just described, there was only 86 points. some acres there, and I think there's a, a different version of this out there, and I just want to make sure that, that we have the right version that's going through the city council right now.
Okay, well, it's not being voted on this evening, so, um, I think, um, if, if, uh, planning can check on that before it does go to, um, second reading, we will want, make sure we get that straight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton. Yeah, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak under this public hearing. So I will declare this public hearing on ordinance oh two one zero two dash six closed and move on to item number five, which is public hearing on resolution R two one zero two dash seventeen, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a resolution, uh, city of Galton, Summit County, Tennessee, adopting plan of services for annexation of thirty-one point three seven eight acre parcel. Tax map one thirty-five parcel, oh, three two point oh one, located west of Woods Fair Road and south of Nichols Lane at fourteen sixty Woods Fair Road and providing for an effective date, this is a public hearing.
Public hearing on resolution R two one zero two dash seventeen now open, if you'd like to speak, indicate that, um, you'd like to by raising your hand, either on your phone or on the computer. Yeah, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public hearing on resolution R two one zero two dash seventeen closed. Item number six is public hearing on resolution R two one zero two dash eighteen, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor, this is a resolution, city of Galton, Summit County, Tennessee, annexing three thirty-one point three seven eight acre parcel, tax map one thirty-five parcel, oh, three two point oh one, located west of Woods Fair Road and south of Nichols Lane at fourteen sixty Woods Fair Road into the city of Galton. Authorizing the annex property to be, uh, to a council district, repealing conflict of orders, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
This public hearing is now open on resolution R two one zero two dash eighteen. If you'd like to speak, please indicate by raising your hand, that's star nine on your phone or the raise your hand function online. Yeah, I see no one, um, demonstrating that they would like to speak in this public hearing, so we will declare it closed. Um, and then we will move on to item seven, which is public hearing on ordinance, ordinance oh two one zero two dash eight. And Mr. Overton, you again.
Thank you, Mayor, this is ordered city of Galton, Summit County, Tennessee, rezoning two parcels totaling thirty-six point five nine eight acres from the rural residential county to the R forty low-density residential county to R forty, uh, low-density residential district to R eight medium-density residential plan, residential development district with a preliminary master development plan for Woods Crossing located west of Woods Fair Road and south of Nichols Lane at fourteen sixty Woods Fair Road. Authorizing the revision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of order to provide for severability and providing for an effective date, and this is a public hearing.
Thank you, the public hearing on ordinance oh two one zero two dash eight is now open. And, um, I just want to remind you, this is the final public hearing related to Woods Crossing. If you'd like to speak, you may raise your hand by using star nine on your telephone or by using the raise your hand function online. I see two people with their hands, no one person with their hands raised, Mr. Henshaw.
PJ Posey, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, this is PJ Posey, Robert Posey at fifteen forty Woods Ferry Road. And I, I know you've probably heard me complain before. Um, no one in this area is happy about what's happening here, and we're not really happy about the entrance to the Woods Crossing coming off of our road. But our main concern over here is we're the lowest lying construction on this, uh, excuse me, house on this road. And we sit less than twenty feet from Creekside. The Creekside has erosion all up and down. This new, uh, Woods Crossing y'all got going in back here behind us has five stormwater holding areas. Now, we get a lot of rain, this little creek is pretty full. So we're, we're at a pretty high risk of being flooded. When those holding areas get full of water and they've got to go somewhere, they're gonna empty out into this little creek that is already flooding from heavy rains. And then also, we bought this area because we're on the edge of town. And we've lived here twenty years and we've been taxpayers for twenty years and hard workers. And now we feel like we're being intruded on. Our neighbor next door, Mr. Kirkpatrick, cannot speak for himself because he's, he is ill and has an attorney speaking for him. Therefore, I cannot confront my neighbor about this, which I know he would not want me to be flooded. And I don't think he would want me to have to have our house sixty, within sixty foot of a main sewer line coming out of that neighborhood. I want you to all to ask yourself how you would like, how you would feel with a two hundred, uh, what is it, a hundred and twenty-two homes so far that are gonna be having a sewer line running less than sixty feet from my bedroom window, how would you feel if it were you? I've pleaded with everyone to help me with this creek before, and they always pass the buck. Oh, it belongs to Field and the Streams, Field and the Streams saw it belongs to the city. I've, I confronted good all about this. I've confronted, uh, the city water department and I confronted all of y'all, and nobody's giving me any answers and nobody's gonna help us. If I flood, somebody ought to be held responsible. And I, like everyone else, are sick of all this overgrowth of this town, and now you're infringing on people on the edge of town. And also, it is illegal to hunt in this area, so there is gunfire that happens around here. And I'm surprised that they would be putting in a neighborhood where there's hunting that goes on. And, uh, thank you for the time. Any, any questions, I don't mind answering, but I just know that, um, if I'm gonna be flooded out, I'm gonna go down with the ship, y'all are gonna hear me keep on screaming, me and my husband both. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Posey. I don't see anyone else with their hand raised to indicate that they'd like to speak, so I'm going to declare public hearing on ordinance oh two one zero two dash eight closed. That concludes the public hearings for the evening, we're gonna move now to, um, second reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash nine, and for that, Vice Mayor Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor, this is ordinance appropriate funds for civet center pool repair change order, so move.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, I believe the second was by Councilwoman George, is that correct?
No.
Oh, Councilwoman Love, okay. Second by Councilwoman Love, is there any discussion? I'm gonna ask Ms. Kittle to call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven I zero nays.
Thank you, it does pass unanimously, that was second reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash nine. Moving on to item number nine, this is first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash seven, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a ordinance of city Galton, Summit County, Tennessee, rezoning fifty-nine point ten point one oh acre parcel from rural residential county district to MU mixed-use district within a master development plan for Twin Eagles Phase Fifteen located north of Wildcat Run and east of Douglas Lane. Authorizing the revisions to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of order to providing for severability and providing for effective date, and I so move.
I have a.
I have a motion by Councilman Overton, I think that second was Councilwoman Love?
George.
Alene.
Uh, I'm sorry, George, Councilwoman George. I wasn't looking and I couldn't tell which one was speaking, so, um, um, second by Councilwoman George, opening the floor for discussion.
I've given my reasons several times why I don't think this is a good idea, and I, I haven't changed my mind at all. I think it's a very dangerous road and will put more people in harm's way of driving on that road than there would be in, in the remote situation where, uh, more than one entrance would be needed and that we just keep on adding more houses and rezoning, and so I'm, I'm I stick with my no vote.
And I'd like to agree with the Councilwoman Love, I mean, you know, I, I think we talked about a little bit about it last week, I I just don't think it needs to be access to Douglas Lane right now. Um, I talked to them maybe about cutting that T-section off of that development and doing something with that, I wouldn't have any problem with that. I think it's a great development, but just right now, the way Douglas Lane is set up, I do not think that it can handle that much more traffic coming in and out of that subdivision and going to that subdivision.
Anyone else wish to speak? Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah, this, this is a reg- a, a normal county road, it's no different than any other county road. But I have to protect the people in Twin Eagles, these folks deserve another interest, get out of the back of Twin Eagles. And I have to protect the folks getting out of Twin Eagles. And that's why I'm supporting this project, let me tell you something, folks, Mr. Jones is gonna build a subdivision whether we approve this or not. They're gonna be able to exit onto Douglas Lane. So, a- and, you know, anybody can call the county planning commission or anybody else, I mean, it's, it's a law, they can't a land lock him there, so he's gonna have access to Douglas Lane and, uh, Mr. Jones builds a good affordable house, and, uh, I have to protect the people in Twin Eagles, I have to have another way out of this place, thank you.
Our city is growing dramatically and we are without any inventory for sell, for homes right now. So this is gonna take a while to build, but this city needs homes and, uh, the Jones product is what people want, so I think it's a great product and it's something we need moving forward.
I'm not sure that we need that many homes, we have already got over two thousand being discussed right now.
All right, we need them and we need them fast.
Yep, and, and, and plus the fact, you know, any development, I'm always for more and it's, uh, I'm always for, uh, different ways out, I, I like to, I don't like to have, see no development just locked in, if you will, or one way in, but the more, uh, exit that we can give for any development, I, I'm all for it.
Thank you, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing no one indicating what they do, I'm gonna ask Ms. Kittle to call the roll for the vote, please, this is first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash seven.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
I'm staying.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilwoman Love?
No.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, four yeses, two noes and one abstention.
Thank you, first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash seven does pass. Moving to item ten, which is first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash eleven, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor, this is first reading on an ordinance appropriating federal grant to the police department for physical year twenty justice mental health collaboration program, I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Love, a second by Councilman Alexander, is anyone who'd like to discuss? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash eleven, and Ms. Kittle, call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven I zero nays.
Thank you, item number eleven is first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash twelve, and Councilwoman Love is recognized again.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, this is first reading on an ordinance appropriating federal grant money to the police department for the physical year twenty comprehensive opioid stimulant and substance abuse site-based program, I so move.
Yeah, I have a motion by Councilwoman Love, I think I heard a second by Councilman Fann, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I have a motion, a second, anyone wish to discuss further? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash twelve, Ms. Kittle, would you please call the roll for the vote?
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilwoman George? Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Mayor, seven I zero nays.
Thank you, it does pass unanimously, item number twelve is first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash thirteen, and Councilman Fan.
This is an ordinance appropriating two hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred for addition to fire station number three for EMS quarters and vehicle, and I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fan, a second by Councilman Alexander. I want to clarify that ordinance really doesn't read well, it is for the housing of a vehicle. So, um, just want you to be clear on that, it is for living quarters and the housing of a vehicle for EMS crews. Um, is there any discussion, any questions? Okay, seeing none, this is first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash thirteen, and we will have a roll call vote, please, Ms. Kittle.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Ms. Love has left the meeting, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, and Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Uh, six I zero nays.
Thank you. Um, item thirteen is first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash fourteen, Councilman Alexander, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, this is the, oh, appropriating twenty thousand one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents from revenue received from insurance for damage to fire station number three, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Vice Mayor Fennell, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, this is first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash fourteen, and we will take the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Six I zero nays, Mayor.
Thank you, first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash fourteen does pass, moving to first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash fifteen. Ms., um, Councilwoman Love, uh, Councilwoman George? Please.
Thank you, ma'am. An ordinance set of the city of Galton, Summit County, Tennessee, amending Galton Municipal Code, Chapter Two, Article Three, Division Three, Planning Commission, Section Two dash one five one, creation and membership in Section one dash one five three, additional powers, I so move.
Second, second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman George, a second by Councilman Alexander, any discussion? And seeing none, this is first reading on ordinance oh two one zero two dash fifteen. And we will vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fann?
Yes.
Councilwoman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Six I zero nays.
Thank you. Yes.
I, I just want to mention that, uh, I'm not sure what happened there, but the the draft copy or the copy that was provided in the agenda package had underlined and strike-throughs. That was a copy provided at the council committee meeting. The actual copy that should have been inserted was one that didn't include underlines and strike-throughs, so uh, the second reading certainly will make sure that that's not going to happen there, so. But the language doesn't change.
Okay, well, just let us know if there are any amendments that need to happen with the strike-throughs.
Uh, there won't be, I, I don't know why the strike-through version got inserted, it was not sent down, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. McCord. Item number fifteen is resolution R two one zero two dash twenty-two, and Councilwoman George is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. A resolution of the city of Galton, Summit County, Tennessee, requesting the commissioner of this Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development to deactivate the regional planning authority of the Galton Municipal Regional Planning Commission and dissolve the Galton and dissolve the Gallatin Planning Commission. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman George, a second by Councilman Overton, opening the floor for discussion. Do you want to clarify for the benefit?
Sorry, Mayor. I just want you to clarify what this is really about, so everybody knows. Some of the public really doesn't understand, so if you'll just clarify, well, I appreciate it.
Okay, that's what I was going to say. There was a lot of discussion at the planning commission about it, because I don't think a lot of people understood. Very simply, the county, um, took away our right to provide planning in that region, and so we have no need any longer for, um, planning in our planning region. Mr. McCord, is there anything that you think I should add or that you would like to add to that, since this is your area of expertise?
Uh, it, this county's adoption of those zoning resolution took away, again, like you mentioned, the, the zoning authority in our planning region. Uh, we still have subdivision authority, but it creates a lot of confusion when we have to approve or review a subdivision and apply county zoning regulations. So we're following what Marable did a couple of years ago, and it's simply exactly like that. And so we will surrender, if you will, our, uh, authority outside of the city limits.
Can I bring up any questions for anyone? Is that sufficient? Councilman Overton?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Thank you.
Anyone? All right. With that, this is, um, first reading on, wait, no, no, resolution R two one zero two dash twenty-two. And Ms. Kittle, if you will call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six eyes zero nays.
Thank you. Resolution R two one zero two dash twenty-two does pass. Um, item sixteen is resolution R two one zero two dash twenty-three, and Vice Mayor Fennell is recognized for it.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution approving reclassification of planning department administrative assistant one to planning one. Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, a second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on this? At this time, I will just offer for the benefit of our other departments, um, because I have pushed off several departments who have sought reclassifications this year, but in this instance, this was an open position, and I did not want us to move forward with hiring a position that would be better suited in a different position. So that's what we're doing, and I appreciate your support of it. Any questions? All right, this is resolution R two one zero two dash twenty-three. Ms. Kittle with the roll call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six eyes zero nays.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kittle. It does pass unanimously. Item seventeen is resolution R two one zero two dash twenty-four. Councilman Fan, you're recognized.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement between Sumner County and the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, for the construction and use of an emergency services area at fire hall three. I so move.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fan, a second by Councilman Alexander. This, again, is related to the money that was discussed earlier. It's where.
Wow.
That was you.
It was me. I'm so sorry. I have a new phone.
But this is providing an EMS crew in the space at, um, fire station three. So any questions or discussion?
Can I ask one thing, Mayor? I, I know that we do things to help the county, and the county returns the favor to us somewhat. But when you go into an agreement like this, I know we've done it before. Is, is there any kind of, uh, separation of, of water, electric bills, or do we absorb all that right there, pretty much?
Well, uh, we have historically assumed the operating costs moving forward. Um, you, I don't think you were on the council, but several years ago, we did ask for, um, the county to help us with construction of fire station number five, because we would be, um, assuming those operating costs long term. And what we were asking for was, we, we were asking them to contribute the portion that was dedicated to the EMS, um, services in that building, and they declined to do so. But we know that's in the best interest of our citizens, and so we went ahead and did it anyway, and we'll continue doing that. And this was a situation where they needed an ambulance crew in this section of the city, and so they are, um, paying to have this added on.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Anyone else? All right. This is resolution R two one zero two dash twenty-four. Ms. Kittle, if you would call the roll for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilwoman George.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Mayor, six eyes zero nays.
Resolution R two one zero two dash twenty-four does pass unanimously. That is the end of the agenda for this evening. Um, that was seventeen items and pretty good timing on it. So we will move now to other business. Now we'll ask this council if any member has something to bring forward under other business.
Mayor, I just want to remind everybody, in March, the Shamrock runs coming up to support our local teachers and our local schools. It's coming up. It's going to start at city hall. It's Saturday, March, the twelfth.
Thirteen.
Thirteenth, sorry. I knew I'd get my dates wrong, but anyway, it's that Saturday. Uh, I encourage everybody to come out, support, get you, somebody in your business to help support the Chamber Foundation. Uh, it's a great cause, and it supports our local teachers and our local schools.
And it's a lot of fun, and it grows every year.
I think June and I will be participating in that, right?
We're going to run this year, Sean. You mean, I'm going to be right behind you, okay?
Okay.
I'll be behind y'all with my all.
I am directing traffic.
I, I, I direct traffic as well, so.
Is there anyone else that has any other business this evening? Okay, seeing no one indicating that they do, we will move on to public recognition on non-agenda related items. If you have something that you would like to bring forward to this council that was not on this evening's agenda, now is the time that you may do that. Again, that we ask you that you introduce yourself, you give us your address, and you will be limited to five minutes, um, to indicate that you'd like to speak on your cell phone. Use star nine. If you're on the computer, hover down to the bottom of the screen, and you'll find the raise your hand function and click on it, and we will recognize you to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Pascal Javance, go ahead.
Pascal Javance, one three three five, I'm going to bike. Um, first, I want to thank the chief, chief Benny for, uh, these guys. Um, one of the neighbor called a few days ago because here the car alarm and uh, two officers showed up at my door, and, um, they were really quick, uh, really professional. They made sure I was leaving there, uh, without offending me, really polite, um, really good experience achieved. Unfortunately, I didn't catch the name of the officers, but, uh, uh, great people. Uh, appreciate, appreciate the experience. Uh, and to go back on the, the other side on the fire, um, again, you know, I'm going to repeat myself again and again. Uh, I'm kind of surprised, um, not to hear you, uh, talking about the secondary gear for, gear for firefighters. Uh, they need it, so, um, guys, do something about it. It's a safety issue. It's a safety for the citizen and it's safety for the firefighters. Secondary gear is important. Uh, if you don't know why, um, just go online or talk, talk to the firefighters, and they will explain you what's going on. So, again, uh, that would be great if you take that in consideration. We hope that the city has plenty of money, so get that done. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Um, if anyone else would like to speak, now's the time. Please use the raise your hand function. I believe that's everyone.
I believe so. Thank you, Mr. Henshaw, and thank you, council, and thank you all who are observing and participating in the evening's meeting. With that, we just need a motion to adjourn, and we may do so.
To adjourn.
I have motion to adjourn by Councilman Alexander. We are kind of agenda, so we may adjourn. I wish you all a good evening and a good week, and we will be back here next week with a work session. So y'all take care, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.